Did.
I figured.
You know, and it was one of those things where he said.
But then.
I didn't run to the front.
I'm like, what the hell?
Sure. Because of you.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. And note that all members of the town council are indeed present for this meeting. These young people don't know how to tell time. Also present, our town manager Cliff Gravier, assistant town manager Terry Teeman, our town clerk Molly Daisy, and our IT director Will Wharton. And if you would all stand please for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first item is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next meeting, the next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held on August 3rd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or the ayes have it. The next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on August 19th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. And then approval of the minutes of the executive session held on August 19th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
We have too many meetings.
Too many.
We have too many meetings.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the reorganization meeting held on September 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the financial report. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. This report covers the budget through September 30th, 2022. We are now 50% through fiscal year 2023. On the operating budget revenue, so far income from all forms is 5.9% lower than the prior year. To date, we have collected 77.1% of the total budget. On the expense side, our expenses are higher than expected because of addition of new full-time employees, more summer staff, higher seasonal rates, maintenance on the water tower, increased fuel costs, as everybody can recognize, and replacement of damage from the May storm. We have expended 59.8% of our budget. I recognize that this report is subject to audit and respectfully move that the council accept and approve the unaudited report. I will go into more detail when I give my report from the count for the meeting that we had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is announcements. And I think our incredible events director has a couple of announcements to make. Ms. Maluski?
So we have quite a few events coming up for the winter. And we'll have our annual holiday happenings, the first Saturday in December, the party with Santa, beach tractor, trolley rides through town, and then the tree lighting is that day as well, December 3rd. And that will launch our weekend wonderland in Bethany, which we do every year in collaboration with the Chamber and Coastal Point, townwide incentives with the businesses, the first three Saturdays leading up to Christmas. And then new for this year is a coastal Christmas showdown and crawl, which is a decorating contest open to homes and businesses and all holidays. Registration will begin the Saturday, the Friday after Thanksgiving, run through December 9th. And then the tour will begin on December 10th, where all entries will be posted onto our website and the displays will be ready for the community to view, and they'll vote on them. So visitors begin their crawl at the downtown information kiosk, cup of coffee, hot chocolate, and then they can board the trolley and go on an evening tour of the lit displays.
Oh, that's nice, yeah.
For those who can't, don't want to go on the trolley, want to do it themselves, we're going to have an interactive Google map on our website and all the addresses listed on there so they can do that themselves. And then the crawl will continue at participating businesses once they return from the tour. And voting will begin on the, right after that, so between the 10th and the 16th, the community gets to vote. They'll vote online or come to town hall. And four categories will be best coastal theme, most elegant, most festive, and best use of animation and/or audio special effects. Entries will be judged on exterior decorations only. And the Chamber and Coastal Point are involved in this as well. They're going to sponsor the prizes for the businesses. And it's open to all businesses, not just Chamber members. And then winners will be announced on the bandstand on December 17th, followed by a block party for all in attendance on the plaza. So just a little holiday flair around here. Marketing will begin October 31st. And then the final winter event that we're involved in is the annual Fire and Ice with the Chamber. That's going to be January 27th through the 29th. And the town is again sponsoring that. We're going to have a sculpture with 10 blocks of ice as well up on the bandstand. That will be Jaws. And we'll be showing the movie Jaws on the bandstand and then have a red carpet photo spot. So everything's going to be centrally located there. And then the big finale is going to be the fireworks once again. So lots going on here.
Yep.
Are there any questions? Anybody in the audience? And all this will be posted on the website, won't it?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. Thank you, it sounds like quite a lot of events, a lot going on. Is there anyone in the audience who has something they'd like to say that is not on the agenda, relating to any item not on the agenda? Okay. I just wanted to make one announcement. Next Friday, October 28th, is National First Responders Day. And this is something that was designated by Congress back in 2017 started. And the purpose is to honor our first responders, our police department, our fire department, and our EMS folks. And we all know that they have done an incredible job for our community and for each one of us. And we owe them a debt of gratitude, both themselves and their families, for the sacrifices they make and for everything they bring to the job every day. So if you see them around in the next few days, just thank them and wish them a happy National Responders Day. That's all. Okay, the next item on the agenda are reports. And the first is a report from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Boswell.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, we received the first draft and hopefully the final draft of chapters 1 through 3 on the 10-year plan. We're reviewing that currently. We approved a partition of a property at location 651 Tingle Avenue. It was an R1 change on the property. We also improved the changes and transmitted to the council of the public hearing information that you had today on section 410 6 and 507 7. And we've completed, added a new section for a minimum tree density requirement. That's what we've done. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. The next item on the agenda is a report from the Cultural and Historical Affairs Committee.
CHAC met on September 14th and then again on October 12th. At both of these meetings, pretty much we covered the same items, so I will just report on each item. First of all, the committee previewed a video that's being produced of the displays at the Dinker Urban Museum. When completed, the video will be available for public viewing on the kiosk here in the town hall lobby and probably also on the town website. This is being done primarily as an accommodation for anyone who cannot physically, is not physically able to enter, to visit the museum. We hope that will be done fairly soon. What is the name of the people? I couldn't remember. 1440? 1440 Film Company is the company that we've hired to do this. CHAC members have recently been identifying Bethany homes that may be added to the Heritage Trail. Originally, when we started the Heritage Trail, the house had to be, had been built before 1930. And that was, limited the number of houses. And of course, they have to, there's other qualifications, too. The, there can't be any changes to the exterior of the house. And we have to, we have to have some other information also from the homeowner. However, CHAC recently extended the date to 1950 that the house was built. Because the Delaware State Preservation Office considers buildings 50 years or older as historic. So we pushed that date up 20 years. The committee also decided on three cultural evenings for early 2023. They're going to be held on, in February, March, and April of that next year. And more information will be available once contact is made and definite dates are set for those. Currently, there's a Smithsonian traveling exhibit at Hall Store, which is located in the coastal historical village that's in Ocean View. If you haven't been there, it's a very interesting place to visit. The name of the Smithsonian exhibit is called Changes in Rural America. And it's a very interesting exhibit about rural areas in this country, which of course, as most of us know, is most of our country, and the changes that have gone on over the years. The exhibits open Fridays from 6 to 8, Saturdays 10 to 4, and Sundays 1 to 4. CHAC members have volunteered to be docents at the last weekend in October. So we'll be there that whole weekend. The Dinker Urban Museum has been open Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday from 10 to 12 ever since the beginning of May or the end of April, I guess. But beginning in November through April, next April, the museum will only be open on Saturdays from 11 to 1. Over the past months, there have been approximately 300 visitors. So that is pretty good for a small museum. Including, I was there yesterday, and just coincidentally, these two people came to the museum, two women, and they were both, one of them was the great-granddaughter of Mr. Dinker, and the other one was the great-granddaughter of Mr. Erit. And they, they had never met, and, but they both came to the museum exactly at the same time, within five minutes of each other. So that's it. Lots of fun. Thanks very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Olmstead. Any questions? Anybody in the audience? Okay. The next is a report from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. The Budget and Finance Committee met on Thursday, October 20th, to review the second quarter of the fiscal year 2023. The main purpose of this meeting was to review the results of the first quarter, first half, excuse me, in comparison to the budget for previous fiscal years. Town revenue for the first half of the year was $8.9 million, which is 5.8% lower than the previous fiscal year. The main reason revenues were lower because we had one-time large revenue income, and town was benefiting from the boon that we had from tremendous construction and sales. This year, however, housing market is much calmer. Revenues are much lower in comparison. Current projections indicate that the former town revenue should exceed the budget, however, by about $250,000 by the end of this fiscal year. On the other hand, townwide expenses were $5.9 million, which is 16.4% higher than last year. Most of the increases were in personnel needing, from needing to offer higher hourly wages, as everybody understands getting staff is very difficult, bandstand performances, returning to pre-pandemic levels, contract for the maintenance on the water tower, and obviously higher fuel cost, replacement of trash bins, and purchase of Moby Bats, mats, and beach volleyball equipment. As you know, this year, we tried to do more activities for the teenage children. An increase of cost of supplies and water treatment chemicals. Early projections indicate that the town council might need to supplement the operating expense budget at the end of the fiscal year as summer wages and inflation have been more than expected. We'll have a better understanding of this when we get to the end of the third quarter. The committee discussed planning for the futures. We may consider recommending a small increase in property taxes, which I know people just love. Some changes in parking and shuttle fees are also being considered. The committee will focus on making sure that the revenue for the summer season is fully sufficient to cover the summer cost. The next meeting will be Thursday, October, or excuse me, Thursday, January 19th. That's my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody from the audience? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is report from the Non-Residential Design Review Committee. Mr. Kilmer.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met on September 9th. The applicant was Mr. James Coffey for the Property Owners of the Neighbor Properties LLC. That's Mark and Susan Neighbor. They requested approval of a design for a one-story 13-foot by 39-foot addition to the existing building. Their business is located at 8 North Pennsylvania Avenue. The, after reviewing all the documentation, it met both the request, both the Design Review Committee requirements as well as the town code. So with that being said, the committee approved their application. That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Kilmer. Any questions? Any from the audience? Okay. Report from the Fourth of July Parade Committee. Mr. Fry.
Mayor and Council, we met this morning at 9 o'clock. We had 13 people arrive. And within one hour, we reached consensus on both the theme for next year, which is going to be Sand and Sea in '23, and preliminary sketch for the T-shirts. So that's pretty good for an hour. Our next meeting will be December 13th at 9:00 AM.
Any questions? None from the audience? All right, thank you, Mr. Fry. And now, report from the town manager, Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, Council. Julie, unless you really want to stay here and endure this for the rest of the day, you're welcome to leave, okay? So.
Glutton for punishment.
She wants to hear what you say.
Well, really, I'm going to take credit for a lot of things she's done, so.
So you can't get away with it, I see.
Guess not. The remnants of Hurricane Ian, following the surprise storm we had in late August, really had an impact on our beach, took the level of sand on the beach way down and ate into the dune a considerable amount. After the summer storm, Denrick was able to actually come in and were willing to cut into the existing dune to create another ramp that ran diagonal to the boardwalk down to the dune, adjacent to the boardwalk down to the dune. Immediately after the storm, we picked up some news releases that Denrick had restored all of South Bethany's ramps. And we were very concerned because we had not seen a Denrick employee in the town in the days immediately after the storm had left. Subsequently, we called and complained a good bit, and were finally briefed on the fact that our beach had been assessed immediately after the storm, at the same time South Bethany was assessed. And to date, at this moment, South Bethany's dune is twice as wide as our existing dune. And Denrick thought it would be unwise to cut back into what little dune we have remaining to create access points. So right now, we have eight access points open and eight closed, and they will remain so unless we have a substantial build back of sand on the beach, which probably here, this time of year, moving into winter, isn't likely. That is not good news for us at all, and we are probably more exposed, especially north and south, because the ocean continues to work on areas north and south of the main boardwalk area and break at the edge of the dune consistently. So that's an issue for us moving forward. Hurricane Ian also brings to mind, certainly the photos and the videos of Florida, brought us back to doing another revisit to our Blackwater Complex. A Blackwater Complex, for those that don't know, are seven acres that we purchased out of the 100-year floodplain near Frankfurt. We have a, an alternative public works yard there, an alternative public works storage building, an alternative office space for administrative staff in the police department. So we updated a few things and picked up on a few deficiencies there. Cell phone coverage, installed some analog, installing some analog phone lines in case our voiceover IP goes down, and some other updates that we needed, again, to try to be ready to move in if we have to in the event of an emergency. Over the years, the town has had a variety of interest and real need to have a better idea of what's below the ground underneath our feet. And to that point, we have contracted with the J.D. Hines Corporation to do a soil analysis of the entire community. J.D. Hines will be drilling in 40 separate locations placed throughout the community. They'll do an analysis, they're, they'll drill to a depth of eight feet. And they'll give us a report at the end of all that that will recall, will give us boring data, laboratory test results, information on the level of the quality of drainage our soils allow, and groundwater depth information. And I think it's important to us moving forward, especially groundwater depth, because it's easy to pick up on initiatives and projects that work in areas that don't have tidal water inches below over three-quarters of the community. So that's our circumstance here. And if we continue to approach things as if we're 10 miles inland, when in fact tidal water inundates at least three-quarters of the community on a regular basis, that's sort of nonproductive. The federal government has mandated that, through the EPA, that by October 24, 2024, that every municipality has to have documented, a documented map and analysis of each water installation in their community. We provide water service to over 3,600 homes when you include the salt pond and Savannah's Landing and businesses. And that's a daunting task for our three-person water department. They have brought in JMT Engineering to go ahead and work with them and create a modern GIS locate system for all 3,600 connections. Each connection will be identified and be tracked over the course of time and maintained in an ARC GIS system. Part of our contract with them involves JMT storing our data, but we also have an ARC GIS license ourselves. We have an employee who has some training in that. We're going to work to reactivate our license, if you will, and maybe we'll store the data at the same time and duplicate it here as an exercise to help us become more, more, use our ARC GIS system more than we do today. I gave you all a picture, and that's the picture, the council table. We have the wall outside with the names and the length of service for council people. We sent a panel off last November to have it updated and engraved with, and bring it up to date with the council members and council service. That plate, and the glass is expensive, and the project has gone on for a number of years, as you can see from out there, that was lost in the mail. We.
And it's not small. I was going to think it's huge.
The company then sent us another one that didn't fit. And then we engaged in an exercise that's gone over for the last, on for the last six months, where any drawings we sent, anything we did with them to try to show them what we needed a replica of, was, did not suit them. So finally, they sent us a specific piece of wax paper and a specific pencil that we had to trace the existing panel on and mail back to them. They then created another panel that they sent to us that you can see is broken into a dozen pieces. So that, that's the update for council members who wonder why their names aren't on the wall yet. That's the story. So, Mayor, Council, that's all I have.
Is there a message there?
Cliff, we noticed that the one that was broken was right where Lou Kilmer's name and Jack's going. We just wondered if they were the black.
I think you're right. If you look at it right there, yes.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
How was it determined where in town where the testing sites were done, as far as the subsoils?
We let the professionals pick the sites. We wanted to look at a map because we wanted to make sure that it made sense to both Public Works and staff in my office. And they selected the sites. They had, again, the same GeoMap we have to look at, that you've all seen in my office, with the blue and tan, and worked off that. But J.D. Hines has been at this a long time. They've done borings in the area throughout the community so that I think they have a good idea of what's going on. And they've recently done borings as part of the Loop Dam Study and also for the rehabilitation of the land strip at Lake Bethany.
Were there any surprises?
No, I mean, they did what we hope they do. There's no reason to do borings towards the end of the Walchuk property or towards the end of the nature center. So where they placed the borings indicates a knowledge of the town and the.
I mean, but other, other as a town, there, there anything that changed? Or anything that we're surprised to see?
No, it's generally a good blanket of areas that aren't actually tidal marsh, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there any update on the beach replenishment? I know that was, was going out for bid, and I think it was even a broader project now, right? Or a bigger project?
They, the project will be from Mahoboth to Felmick Island. Right out of the gate, the word that we all heard was that it would be in the fall. At an Association of Coastal Towns meeting here during the end of the summer, Denrick appeared at that meeting and made it clear that there was no clear date on the date for the replenishment. And it would not surprise any of us to see it roll into spring and summer.
And also, I would add to that, that ACT wrote a letter to Carper and our delegation, our federal delegation, asking that they come and remeasure the beaches after the October 15th, the October storm, early in October, because they had their measurements based on something that happened before that storm. And there's more, obviously, that needs to be done. So we'll see what happens to that, too.
They had surveyed the beaches just almost about a month before, before all that sand was lost. And it was a good pickup by, by the Association of Coastal Towns because they would have worked off that template instead of coming back to see how much more was lost.
Which is a good example when you look at the screen.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else?
Any truth to the rumor that my name's not on the board because I missed that 1 o'clock hearing today?
Who are you?
That's true. That's true.
Anyone in the audience have any questions?
John Gawn, 676 Collins. Good afternoon, everyone. Cliff, in regard to the beach replenishment, does the town have any role in deciding what the core is? the Corps is doing and the technique that they're using and so forth, or is that just mandated and we don't have much of a say? And I ask that question because I have a follow-up based on that answer.
Sure. No. The discussion between state representatives and the Corps is conducted at the level of Denrick, so the Delaware Natural Resources and Environmental Control Department has a dialogue with the Corps. I don't believe they've ever pushed back or had any real issue with how or what the Corps does. I think the approach most of the time here in the state of Delaware is to be thankful the replenishment is still occurring.
I ask that question because as we've been working on, as a member of the Planning Commission, on the 10-year plan and so forth, I've learned a whole lot of new techniques and so forth related to stormwater management and so forth. Grand Isle, Louisiana, installed, and it was part of, I don't have the fine details, but part of a federal recovery, something called GeoTubes. These are fabric, pieces of cloth that you fill with sand, and you can put it to contours of your shoreline as a way of mitigating storm surge and so forth. They're doing it in Nantucket, the same thing. It is expensive. They fill these things up and then they put them at the base of like the dune. And so my question about whether we would have any involvement has to do with, are you aware of any of these cutting-edge techniques that might be considered by the Corps or by Denrick?
I'm aware of over a dozen different ways to approach beach replenishment. The tubes are one of them, but I know that in our conversations with the Corps, what the Corps endorses, what the Corps believes in right now is the movement of sand from the ocean back to the beach. And I'm sure the Corps is aware of all those also. And I'm sure in Nantucket and in the area in the south, I'm sure the Corps is involved in it. I don't know how effective they are. There's a great book out there, it's called Against the Tide. If you have an interest in that, in that type of thing, you should read the book. It talks about a lot of things like that, the berms, artificial reefs, you name it. And basically, nothing is very effective, as we know, and certainly beach replenishment isn't very effective, but we're thankful we receive it.
I mean, the remnants of Ian, you walked out and it was a cliff.
Yes.
I don't mean to make it a play on words, but, and so, any, anything that, that new or whatever, I'm just interested to make sure that they're exploring whatever they can. I know it's a, it's a losing battle, but anyway.
It's the soup du jour for the Corps at this moment, and it's quite an organization, I think, to try to get to focus on other things, and I'm just thankful we're in their plan right now and getting replenishment, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gong. Anyone else? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was watching the police by my truck. Ah, let's see. The next item is the discussion consideration and a possible vote on committee appointments.
Okay. All right, every October, we appoint committees and appoint or reappoint them. And so these are the committee appointments. We sent them out to, we had some new people apply, and we sent out to each of the committee chairs and asked them who they wanted to nominate for this year, and these are the nominations. The Order Committee, Chuck Peterson, of course, is the chair, and two reappointments, David McConte and Richard Slevkin, and a new person added to the committee, Tom Henry. Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee, Mickey Hinman is the chair, and they'll be the same members, Faith Dunal, Diane Fogash, Teresa Kyle, Dan Rosenblatt, and Carl Toll. And then Town Manager or the designee, and also Sergeant Patrick Foley is there as an advisor. Budget and Finance, Jerry Morris is the chair, and these are basically the same appointees, Scott Bell, Denise Boswell, Marty Decree, Joe Healy, Fulton Lapato, and Patrick Shepley. Charter and Ordinance Review, Rosemary Hardeman, Chair. The committee appointments are Mike Boswell, Carol Brigleb, Lee Bunting, Michael Loftus, Tempe Steen, and Susan Frederick as a non-voting member. Cultural and Historical Affairs Committee, Carol Olmstead is the chair. We have a new member, Kathy Blackburn, that she is nominating, and Marissa Miller is also a new member of that committee. And then the reappointments would be Lee Bunting, Carol Kaliff, Jan Kinsella, Theo Lapato, Mary Lou McNerney, Claire Simmers, and Mary Lou Urquhart. Then the Fourth of July Parade Committee, and I would just point out, they don't abide by any rules. They can have as many members as they would like. So Bruce Fry, of course, is the chair. He's adding a new member, Mark Levin, excuse me. And then reappointing Chris Armula, Ray Armula, Scott Bell, Ron Kaliff, Jen Carter, John Salini, Maureen Kilmer, Doug Mowry, Jerry Morris, Marcia Ridenour, and Patrick Shepley, and of course Julie Molesky is the associate non-voting. Non-Residential Design Review Committee, Lou Kilmer is the chair, and then the same members would be reappointed, Mike Boswell, John Hendrickson, James Weisgerber, and Susan Frederick. Stormwater and Flooding Committee, Ron Kaliff is the chair, and the committee members remain the same, Bruce Fry, Mark Berenhauer, Jack Gordon, John Corby, and Chip Smith. And finally, Telecommunications Committee, Patrick Shepley is the chair, and it would have the same members, Margaret Cook, Ron Dobbs, Brad McVain, Paul Smith, and Jim Tobin, and Town Manager or designee. So these are my recommendations, and I make a motion that we approve them.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry, it's me. We have a first and a second, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'd make one comment before we go on. I just wanted to thank the members who, for one reason or another, did not want to be reappointed this year. Thank them for their service. On Cork, we had Norman Knopf. And the Board of Adjustment, I would especially like to recognize and acknowledge the long service and distinguished service of Vahan Mushegan. Is that how he pronounces it?
Yes, close enough.
He's done that for about 11 years now, and he's done an outstanding job. So thank you.
Oh, it's me. This is the discussion consideration and possible vote on the appointments to the Planning and Zoning Adjustment Committee.
Planning and Zoning Commission, okay. We have two people who, this is a separate, Planning and Zoning Commission is established under the Delaware Code, and the appointments are for three years. And so we would like to, I would like to recommend that we reappoint the following two members for another three-year appointment, ending on October 21, 2025, Diane Fogash and John Gong. I may make a motion that we approve them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion consideration and possible vote on a contract from Sky Shooter displays for the 2023 July 4 fireworks display in the amount of $30,000. Mr. Gravier?
Mayor? This is the earliest, I think, I've ever brought a, I'm sure it's the earliest I've ever brought a July 4 fireworks contract to the council. The vendors are all out writing various customers and telling them that they need them to move ahead and commit to the fireworks show where they can't guarantee a show. And if you remember, last year, Ocean City canceled its show because of a lack of product and issues with personnel. So this is the same company we used last year. They put on a great show. Would have been a better show if our beach was wider, which allows us to shoot a larger show, and it makes the show much, much more dramatic and fun. Hopefully, maybe this year, we'll be able to do that, but this is a contract for $30,000, the same amount we paid last year with Sky Shooter displays for fireworks for July 4.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a quick question. I mean, obviously, we don't know when the beach replenishment will be happening. Is there any contingencies, like if that's happening around the Fourth of July? It seems like it could be a real possibility.
We have a rain date, and we will have a portion of the beach open and complete, even if they're actively working. So we believe we'll be able to work around that. And generally, the contractors, and I think we've been through all of them and know them, work with us on events like that. The issue will be how many people will be able to be on the beach to see the show, but we'll still go on with the show.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience? Okay. We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Gravier.
Mayor? Central Park sign.
The final item on the agenda is discussion consideration and possible vote on the Central Park sign. Mr. Gravier?
Well, I hope to engender some interest in this, because I haven't been able to to date. One of the things that sort of dropped out of serious consideration as the park was being designed was the design of the display of the park's name on that massive wall on the park. And it was brought to our attention, and I think the citizen was right in doing it, that certainly it wasn't in keeping with everything else we do in terms of how it looks and how it's presented. Over the course of time, I've given you all a couple of different iterations of alternatives that don't drastically alter the wall, because the wall is a very, very serious structure, but does, does put a different font, a little bit of a different design on the wall. I've given you another one, and I'm hoping that maybe we can go ahead with working on that and doing that if you're happy with that. And the cost for that would be about $8,000. This is important to us, or at least to Public Works, because we have put off for years putting lights on the sign and doing plantings and sod around the sign until we make a decision on what we're going to do with the, with the display. So if this is satisfactory, would like to move ahead. If it's not, I'd love to hear some alternative ideas. Would like to be able to move ahead, plant grass now, put bushes in now, and move ahead with the change now, but if not, I'd like some other direction from the council.
The one and a half inch returns, does that just mean how far the letters stick out?
Yes.
Is this internally lit? Is it lit at all?
It's not lit now. But remember, we had a fail with the system that was there, and we took them out.
Yeah, so this will not be lit?
This will be lit, yes.
This would be lit? Oh, all right.
Yes. It'll be lit with light from the ground.
Yeah, with the ground, got you, all right.
Will this design allow for more than just grass in front of the sign, some kind of low bushes?
Beautification, we'll go to work on it. It lends itself well to what we do, and so it's an area that'll be, I hope to be, again, something that pops a little bit.
I like it.
Yeah, I personally find it very attractive.
Which one are they two?
No, there's just one.
Only one.
I'm not giving you choices.
I had a second one, I'm sorry.
It's the same thing.
No, it's not. It's, that's...
The one you have probably shows Bethany Beach in sort of an italic font.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Scott, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, well, I also, I appreciate the fact that we've talked about this a year ago, and I was like, I'll sketch some stuff up. So now you know what my clients go through.
And explain why you're late?
That's right, yeah. That's what it was doing for the last hour. I was feverishly sketching things on the Central Park sign. I just lost track of time. Yeah, I mean, I, as you, as you know from before, I didn't, I don't think that the existing sign necessarily speaks to the character of town. I don't see this as all that much different. It's just like some Boulder font and a, you know, a town seal that at 35 miles an hour is probably not that visible. You know, I guess my question for everyone would just be, does this feel appreciably different than what's there now, and is it worth spending $8,000 on? Or is it worth just saying, like, yeah, that's not exactly what we hope for, but like, but is anything ever going to be exactly what you hope for? And should you just go ahead and plant that and light it? And like, one of the things about that is it just feels very naked right now, and as you pointed out, it's not lit, it's not landscaped, it's not, you know, so I, I don't mean to make that sound like I have an opinion, I just want to suggest that that's another alternative is to, is to say like, hey, maybe Scott was wrong a year ago, and the sign's okay, and like, let's just, let's make that prettier than it is now.
Did you really say, I don't want to make it sound like an opinion?
I meant it more as a Socratic method of, yeah.
Well, I, and it's, I think something is better than what we have, and this may not be the full step, but I think it's a good half step.
And I'm not saying I don't support that. I mean, I'm not saying I think this is unattractive as a sign or whatever, you know, I...
Well, I didn't do it, so...
Yeah, I, yeah. Well, since you didn't do it, let me tell you about this. No, I, and I don't think $8,000 is an exorbitant cost by any stretch of the imagination, so it's not like, it's not like I'm opposed to spending the money, so...
And it's also being able to move ahead with, with the rest of the area in front of the signs.
Yeah. I see that as the most critical thing, right? I think if you, I think you could go either way. You could say, look, we don't love that sign, this sign is somewhat better, let's spend that money and go, and just move forward, I think. Or you say, let's not spend that money and let's just move forward. You know, it's, either way, I would be happy to, to support either of those approaches personally.
Or we have another option. We could put it off for another year and ask you to come up with a design.
Right, that's right, yeah. I could, look, I could promise you that I'll sketch over it again and not do it, yeah.
You know, I guess, and I look at this, it's different than what we have, but we're really not enamored with it. Why can't we just do the landscaping and so forth and think about it for some more? I mean, I hate to keep pushing it off and pushing it off, but this doesn't appear to be that much different than what we already have.
I think it's not much different, but I do think it's a significant step up. I think if you walk over there and look at, look at what's there, I think this has a bit more character. It's in keeping with the colors in the park. It's the green on the brown, which is the same color as the pavilion. And there's not a lot I don't think you're going to be able to do with it. You can, you can work around different fonts, and I don't know what Scott would be thinking to do sketches of, but if you have, if you're stuck more or less with that wall, what else are you going to be able to do?
And that's what I'm getting at, you know, it's, it's like, we're kind of stuck with it, and we're trying to put a little more flash into it, I guess. Is it really worth the effort?
Well, and another aspect is if you take that existing sign off, I believe all those letters are drilled in, are they not?
That $8,000 includes rehabbing the sign, so you'll not know the sign was there.
I noticed, okay.
You could, you could change the, the color of that font. I hear what you're saying about that, like, kind of the color scheme, but it's only the color scheme in that, it's the color scheme of the gazebo, and it's not really the color scheme of town, of our, of our current seal or anything. So, you know, it could be as simple as like, you know, a more subdued, like brushed aluminum or something, or a white or something that's not, you know, the, the green is sort of the National Park Service green, and that's one of the things that like pops out to me that doesn't, doesn't speak necessarily to town.
Versus what?
Versus like, you know, a white or, or a natural, you know, brushed aluminum finish, like a, like a metal finish. My own personal style is more modern than this, which is one of the things, I don't want to try to impart my own, you know, my own thoughts on design necessarily, so... I, I think that, you know, Jerry and I maybe agree that, that it's not that much different. You could just like take the seal, and one of the earlier proposals from a year ago was just putting the seal kind of next to that, or it was similar to that, I guess.
The font dropped in size and the seal was to the, to the left of the sign, yes.
So you could just say, well, that sign's there, let's just put the seal to the left in some scale and, you know, and plant it up and call it a day and light it.
Well, in terms of different things we do, the, the actual cost to redo this is minimal. And when you want to talk about moving, moving what's there into some sort of a brushed aluminum format, I think that sort of a cost would be significant and in keeping with the community. And as we look around here, the museum, the Addy... And as we look around here, the museum, the Addy, I don't know if that's fitting in. I know that your style does run to modern, so, yes.
You know, part of it is that it's massive, and so if, I mean, if we didn't, if we had the insignia, the town seal just to the left of it, and instead of Bethany Beach, just put some, block that off maybe with some nice shrubbery, it would reduce the massiveness of the sign somewhat, and then something in front of it. That's another option.
Well, we had looked at just Central Park, and there was concern on the part of other council members that it didn't say Bethany Beach, so we've had it Bethany Beach.
And they didn't know where they were.
Well, they were confused, too, so.
I mean, we could put the seal, I think the seal, too, just-
You know, I take out in the seal, and it, I guess the problem with the whole thing is it is, we keep saying it's mass, and you really need to cover the territory.
A little bit, yes.
A little bit, so it's not just a big hunk of concrete sitting there. So adding this is great. I guess, I don't want to say, okay, we're going to do this, and we're going to go back and think about it. This should be a one, a one and done.
Please.
The other thing I like about this is it's shorter on one side and wider on the other side, and it looks like Bethany is always moving forward, you know, to get that, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Deep, deep thought. Woo-hoo.
I am absolutely the last person that ought to comment on this, because I notice things like that almost zero. But be honest with you, when I saw the picture in advance, it did jump out at me that it was a little bit more eye-catching. It was, I guess because of the size, I wasn't thinking so much the color. I did like the seal, and my initial reaction was, I like it. It's a little bit bigger, it's a little bit bolder.
Yeah.
And I was, I really thought that was a good thing, but I, again, I'm, I am probably literally the last person that ought to comment on it on this group, because, but it jumped out at me, and I thought it was a nice upgrade, so.
I would just like to say, I would argue with Mickey, I think I'm the last person in this group that ought to be commenting on this, but I'll comment anyway. I like it.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Lou, I think you'd be incredible in an architectural design presentation. That's exactly the kind of shtick you need to throw out there to get your designs right there.
Moving forward.
Yeah.
Bethany Beach, moving forward.
So I make a motion that we accept the sign as presented by our illustrious town manager.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Anybody from the audience wish to comment? Okay.
Thank you.
They may not have seen it.
Oh.
Have you seen it?
It was on the website, wasn't it published on the website?
Yeah, hold on. They can see in the background.
Bethany Beach at one side.
It was in the briefing material on the website.
Seal in the middle.
It's beautiful. It's all you need to know.
Yeah, it's good looking.
Karen, do you want to pass this around, please?
You heard from the chairman it did, so.
Does your motion include $8,000 to? Yes, of course. I didn't say that, but I would assume.
Let's vote before they have a chance to-
Patrick said, let's vote before they have a chance to look at it.
In common.
I know, I was thinking the same thing.
It's important. I think it looks fantastic.
It does look very pretty.
Any comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I said aye. I said, I mean, I'm on the record.
We know where you live.
I was like, yeah, that's right, yeah, got to be on the fence.
Okay, that's the last item on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and thank you those who have the patience to watch.